Welcome to the work session. And Laura, do we need to do roll call now? Are we going to do it later?
We'll do it before the six o'clock meeting, but I did a visual roll call.
Awesome, thanks. And we have two topics for this work session. The first is the proposed academic calendars for the next two years. And the second is the legislative platform. So Rob, do you want to kick off the academic calendar piece?
I do. Thank you, Board President Marquis, board members. Excited to introduce Assistant Superintendent Robin Fernandez, who will be discussing the academic calendar, talk to you all about the process that we've used, and share with you where we ended up in regards to the proposed calendar for 21, 22, and 22 and 23. You won't be voting on this tonight. We're just sharing the information with you. You'll be voting on this in a board meeting in a few weeks. So Robin, take it away.
Great, thank you. The first thing I'm going to do is share my screen. So as I do this, I say, "Good evening, President Marquis, Members of the Board, Dr. Anderson." And it is a little bit like walking and chewing gum at the same time when you share your screen and you talk. So that is what I am in the process of doing right now. There we go, almost. There we go. Okay, can everyone see my screen? Can everyone see my screen as a full screen?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great. I've been told I was on a couple of other Zoom presentations.
It's not a full screen for me.
Oh, it's not a, okay.
It is not. Now it is.
So how's that? Is that good? Okay.
Yeah.
Zoom's been a little bit funky today. So interesting. So, okay, so I am going to dive in. Well, it really seems like it's been possibly a lifetime ago that I was before you to discuss the timeline and the process for creating the academic calendars for, as you know, the 21, 22, and 22, 23 school years. Well, so much has happened since then. So I do want to preface the conversation tonight by saying that these draft calendars that I am bringing to you this evening really are based on the presumption that the 21, 22, and subsequent school years will be normal. And, you know, I have to use air quotes now as we talk about the future. But so you'll see that really there are a couple of minor revisions based on our experiences this spring. But in general, these calendars are based on past experience, not on current experience with COVID. And the calendars that you saw in News and Notes a couple of weeks ago are identical to the calendars that you'll be seeing tonight. So there have not been any revisions since then. But so having said that, though, you know, as we progress through this school year, well, we will undoubtedly learn much more about what life will look like moving forward and how we'll need to adjust what school looks like as a result. However, you know, most, if not all of that, is still really unknown to us at the moment. So having said that, we do know that either as an academic team or as a school board, we can revisit these calendars at any time. And revisions can be made and voted on as necessary as we do navigate the unknown. So what we do know, though, is that as per board policy, calendars do need to approve, be approved by the board on or before November 1st. So hence the reason that I am here tonight. And as Dr. Anderson said, you won't be voting on these tonight. But based on any feedback that you board members may have, I will then bring them back within just the next few weeks so that we can comply with the board policy on or before November 1st. Okay, so this timeline, you will recognize this timeline from February when we last discussed this process. Again, just cannot believe that was just February. I feel like I was much younger then, frankly, than I think I am now. However, there is one addition to this timeline. So, and that's the step that is dated May 12th that you see, which is the feedback review by the Academic Calendar Task Force. So I did add this step to the process, which is the first time, frankly, because after reviewing the feedback that came from all of those represented groups that you see in that grayish, bluish box in the upper right-hand corner, you know, that was a lot of different groups that represent a lot of different voices in the district. And they really had substantive feedback. That was not my experience last time when I led this process. So in the past, you know, most feedback dealt with identifying inconsistencies or has been outside the realm of what can be changed. Well, knowing that it really is obviously not good practice for me to sit in a room alone and randomly make revisions based on the feedback from these groups, I did bring together a task force to review the feedback, decide what was actionable, and then make suggestions for some minor changes. So on this next slide, you will see the group that that came together to look at the feedback and discuss it. I do want to give a real shout out to everyone who gave, like, nearly half a day to really thoughtfully think about feedback that we had gotten from these represented groups and think about balancing it in terms of all of the stakeholders that are represented on this group. So you'll see your parents and teachers and building leaders and ed center leaders and people who represent the needs of our younger students and our older students, et cetera. So I do really want to thank them for all that they did. And so as we looked at the feedback, which was extensive, we started with these first two questions that you see on this slide, which are really important because first, does the feedback align with the school board's negotiated agreement with BVEA? And then, does it align with the academic calendar guiding principles? Because as we know, those are the two items in addition to Board Policy IC that provide the guardrails or the parameters for knowing whether or not feedback is actionable and is part of the whole academic calendar creation process or not. So what those first two questions did for the task force was to divide feedback into two categories. That feedback, which can be considered for application and therefore be actionable or no. So then what we did, once we decided that, you know, any feedback that was in alignment with the negotiated agreement did, it was in alignment with the guiding principles and does comply with the board policy, then we asked ourselves these following two questions. So does the feedback support the implementation of the strategic plan? And probably most importantly, this last question, which is, does feedback make sense from the student perspective? Does it provide an equitable educational experience for students? And does it, at the same time, balance the needs of families, students, and staff? So after really extensive discussion of all these feedbacks, pieces of feedback, these are the revisions that you'll see that are on these calendars that you received in News and Notes a couple of weeks ago. So the first one is removal of the August kindergarten, and I'm looking over here at the same time because I actually have a bigger monitor over here. And without my glasses on, I could see better. So removal of the August kindergarten staggered start and assessment days. And then the removal of the September elementary assessment day. And the rationale was, A, that was based on feedback that we got from different stakeholders. But also, B, when the group talked about it, it made sense because they stated, you know, assessment really looks different now. And most likely, given the types of assessment tools that we are implementing this year, but also thinking about what assessment will most likely look like moving forward, it will probably be broken into smaller chunks and will be much more likely to be able to be folded into the regular school day, just as we are doing now. So really, that's good news because moving forward, it is hopeful that we will not have to dedicate such large chunks of time to assessment. And so that was the first recommendation. The second is the placement of the September Professional Development Day to January, immediately following winter break. And we talked a lot in the task force, and we heard a lot of feedback from our groups about how we are developing an incredible, well, and have developed and are now in the process of implementing really incredible transformative practices that support the long-term outcomes that we've identified in the strat plan. And what we know is that teachers are going to need a lot of support in understanding both the what, the what of these practices, but the how. We know that all teachers want to implement practices that are best for kids. But how we do it really takes a lot of professional learning for teachers. And we know, though, that we have tended for quite a long time in BVSD to front-load the professional development days to before the school year starts in pre-service days or professional development days in first semester. And so we heard clearly, but also in our discussion with the task force, that, you know, we really should take at least one of these professional development days and move it to second semester so that teachers can have professional learning through, you know, through the first semester, not just in August and September and a little in October, but also in second semester if we really are going to support them in their efforts to implement the strategic plan. And so we had quite a bit of discussion about, A, the need for that, and then, B, how to make it the least impactful on families. And so our parents on the committee talked to us about how it's easier for families to make adjustments when, you know, a different day is attached to an already existing break so that it's not just a separate, different day that families have to accommodate for. So in this case, this revision was made tied to winter break. And it's probably worth saying at this point that the task force did incredible work in the sense that every single revision that we are proposing this evening came out of the task force with full consensus. Everybody agreed on every single recommendation that they're making. And of course, that's through a lot of thoughtful conversation about balancing the needs of everyone involved. And so that's probably worth pointing out. Next, the placement of professional development days to Wednesdays. Well, we talked about how we have been engaging in conversations for a very long time. And within the context of the equitable school day conversations and looking forward to the possibility that we may have in the future a late-start day district-wide on Wednesdays. Well, we know that in many of our buildings already, we have a late-start day that already is a different day for families, different than, you know, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays. And so we got feedback from groups, and it was the consensus of the task force that then it would probably be a good idea to take professional development days and place them on Wednesdays because it is already a different day for students and families. So let's just put all of the different days together so that it doesn't leave families having to figure out what to do on professional development days and what to do on Wednesdays, but that they can all be placed. So I guess here on out, Wednesdays will be known as the different day if we do that. But it made a lot of sense, both from a practical standpoint for educators, but also for families for those to be on Wednesdays. And then, fourth, the placement of the April conference exchange date to the last full week in April. So we know that the parent-teacher conference days that occur in both semesters, fall and in second semester, that teachers receive exchange days for their participation in conferences in evenings. So the fall ones occur at the beginning of Thanksgiving week. And then for several years now, the second semester ones have fallen on a longer weekend at the beginning of April. Well, we had substantive feedback from, you know, many, many of these groups that they really wanted it to be a little more separated from spring break, that it made sense, both to families and educators, that we put these last, the second semester conference exchange days at the last full week of April. And that's so that there was a little more separation from spring break, that it allowed for a better instructional flow between spring break and the rest of the year. It seemed like a more natural position to put the break. And also, it doesn't interfere with any sort of testing. And then this last revision was probably, in terms of numbers, in volume, the most consistent piece of feedback that we heard primarily from educators. And that was to please make the last contract day of the school year for licensed staff before the Friday before Memorial Break instead of Tuesday, the day following Memorial Day. So it has flip-flopped a few times over the past several years. And we had a lot of feedback, as I said, primarily from educators saying they would really prefer for the students' final day to be before Memorial Day, and then the teachers and other licensed staff also to be before Memorial Day. So that was an easy thing to make happen, to make people happy while still maintaining the same number of school days for students and the same number of contract days for teachers. And so then these final two slides, this one and this one, are the draft calendars that you saw in News and Notes a couple of weeks ago. So I am very happy to answer any questions or to provide any additional information that I might have that that might help you. So again, that was a rather lengthy explanation of the task force process, but probably worth highlighting so that everybody was aware of the process that we've been going through. So that is, that is it. And I am very happy to answer any questions that people may have.
Okay, thank you so much for your work and such a thoughtful approach with these changes, which as someone who's been in BVSD for a while with kids, they're actually kind of a big deal. In particular, that September PD, which comes right after Labor Day, and as a parent, was always a little bit hard to get. You just felt like you're getting back in the rhythm, and all of a sudden, there you had another day off that you had to deal with. So and of course, adding days off to the end of the winter break is always sort of nice. So thank you for that. Board members, any questions? I guess I'll just start with Richard. I can't see Richard, unfortunately.
Can't see me because I have this big calendar in front of me.
Robin, could you unshare your screen?
Well, you're going to probably put it back on. But anyway, what's the major, is there any major differences between 2021 and? No differences at all? It's the same? Because I'm trying to look at both of them, and I'm trying to see if there were any significant changes. But if it's not, no, I don't have any questions. It looks pretty good. Thanks, Rob, for doing all the work.
Of course, of course, my pleasure.
Having sat on a calendar committee many years ago, it is a lot of work. Thanks a lot, appreciate it.
Kathy?
Of course.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, Donna's not here. So Kitty?
I don't have any questions. I just wonder, who else remembers when there was no full week of school in February? There was always something every single week. Robin remembers. That was terrible. The calendars improved a lot since then.
All right, Lisa? Okay, Stacy?
Yeah, it looks great to me. But I have a question about something I brought up when we met oh-so-long ago. And that is aligning the spring breaks with the neighboring districts. If you recall my story, that one year, my son was in middle school, and he had two teachers who had students in a neighboring district. And so they were gone the entire week after spring break to be with their kids, which I completely understand. But he had two of his five or six, whatever, teachers gone for an entire week. And so I'm wondering if you know, if you know that these spring breaks are aligned or if you know that they're not aligned or if that even came up.
Yes, it did come up. And we actually had conversation about how to align. Because when we created the guiding principles, our, our direction was to align with CU and with as many surrounding districts as possible because the same situation occurs when there are parents of students or others who work for CU or if you work in St. Rain versus Adams 12 versus Adams 50. So the last time I checked, other districts had not published their calendars. It's interesting because as one who monitors this, you know, I'm a little bit too interested in the calendars that I see in other places because since I've seen behind the curtain about the calendars, I like to check this out in other districts. And my guess is that that is not at the forefront of what people are thinking about now, which is why that's later than they usually are in terms of when they are published. But I am happy to go back and check. But last time we did check, we were aligned with some and not with others. We were aligned at last, at last glance with CU. And we were aligned with District 14 and other surrounding districts. So I'm very happy to go back and check and let you know that.
Okay, well, thank you. I'd like to move on to our next item, if everyone's okay with that. Yeah? Okay, so as we mentioned in the last board meeting, we spent some time talking about our legislative platform. And the purpose of our legislative platform is to clarify what are issues that we're advocating for for this legislative session. We share this document with all of our legislators. And we usually try to have some type of meeting with them, whether it's a breakfast or a lunch or whatever, to talk about why we put these things on our platform and why they're important to us. And then we also share them, of course, with our lobbyists. The other thing is that our lobbyists, Tanya and Ernestine, have worked with us for a long time. And they're very knowledgeable about where we stand on most issues. So it's never like a brand-new conversation. But I think it does make sense for us to spend a little time. I know there are some changes I'm interested in making. And so and then what we'll do is we'll bring this up for study at a board meeting, and then we'll put it onto action. So this will be your first of three times that we're going to look at this document. Okay, does that sound okay with everybody? Okay, so who would like to start? I can see all of you if you raise your hand. Or I could start with what I want to change to, either way. Shall I start? Okay. So in the initial paragraph, if you look at the first page, oh, thank you, wow. It speaks to that, to our local control under governance. And it specifically mentions meeting students' needs, providing effective educational programs, and determining the efficient use of resources. So one of the issues I would like to call out, and it might be under educational program, is local governance over curriculum and instructional materials and that we oppose mandates from the federal government on the inclusion or exclusion of specific instructional materials. So I was wondering how people would feel about that. It is a subset already of the language there, so may not be necessary. But I'm just wondering if you would be interested in calling it out a little more specifically?
Tina, I think it's a good idea to call it out since we have some pressure right now from the federal government on what we can and can't teach when it comes to certain controversial areas. And I think we should be able to figure that out and not have the feds tell us.
Okay. Any other comments? I cannot see Lisa. Okay. Richard, are you okay with that? Well, again, we're going to discuss it again. So this isn't, these will be changes we make, and then we're going to review again.
I'm fine with it, Tina. I don't have any problem with that particular change at all. And yeah, so I'm okay with it.
Stacy? And Lisa, I can't see you.
Yeah, it sounds good.
Okay. The other piece is I'm wondering if we should think about significantly changing the portion that speaks to school finance. Our first sentence talks about comprehensive reform of the Finance Act and tax structure to provide adequate and equitable per pupil funding and for it to also be thorough and uniform. And then many of the bullets below it then ask our legislators to maintain either funding for specific populations or funding programs that are really Band-Aids to cover up or make up for the gaps that we exist. And that's primarily the mill levy funding and the bond funding. And I'm starting to wonder if we should consolidate this portion because it's kind of wordy, and I feel like being succinct is better. And to just say something like, we need more money, we need adequate money to cover all of our costs that we're meeting today. Until you're able to do that, we would ask you to maintain the local initiatives we've pursued to fill the gaps that we've identified to meet our students. I'm just wondering what people would feel about restructuring this a little bit. Kitty?
I'd be okay with that because, like you said, I think more succinct is better. This is kind of long, not compared to the CASB document, but it still is. And one thought I have, and I know that this will never happen, but to ask the state legislature to stop balancing the budget on schools and start balancing it on somewhere else. If they did that, the population in Colorado would understand how much, how underfunded the state is. You know, most people don't see money not going to schools. But they would see money not going to roads or not going to human services or not going to, you know, all sorts of things. I mean, that's not going to happen, but that's.
That's an interesting idea.
That's kind of my wish. Maybe then people would pass taxes.
Any comments about that?
So Tina, are you talking about 2.1 under school finance?
Yes.
And how would you change it? Because I actually like the language that's got there now.
So I would maintain 2.1.
In terms of the adequate and equitable per pupil funding?
Yes, I would keep that.
You wouldn't change that, would you?
No, that would be the main point. The idea would be to give more emphasis to that and then maybe get rid of some of the other language because it's just so many different points that are somewhat repetitive.
Yeah. The, the other points, aren't they part of all that categorical funding? I mean.
Yeah.
So the category, for me, the categorical funding, I guess what I'm trying to do, say is that one piece on adequate and equitable per pupil funding does not include the categorical funding or shouldn't include the categorical funding.
Yes, it should.
Well, theoretically, it should.
Yes.
So that would be part of the equitable piece.
So as we look at the distribution of dollars now, you know, once we get them from the state and then it gets to the local, the actual distribution of resources is not really an equitable manner.
Well, I guess it depends if you're looking at ELL funding or FRL funding because we distribute those in different ways.
I'm looking at the general fund.
Right.
And how we make sure that the schools get their dollars. It's not, it's not distributed based on equitable.
There's not a specific rating for it.
Equitable funding or distribution.
Well, Richard, are you talking about the state funding to us or how we distribute it to schools? I'm confused.
Well, I guess both. I mean, if you look at, at once, once we get our budget At once, once we get our budget together and we start distributing the dollars, we're going to get the dollars from the state. Whether it be through categorical funding or not, well, whether it be categorical funding. And then just general fund dollars, right? We get them in both ways now. Is that? Is that the way it works? I'm trying to. Figure out how.
So the way I look at it, Richard, is this is what we want the legislature to do and we don't want them to tie up very much of it. We want to have as much flexibility as we can when the dollars come to us.
Yeah.
So, so that's, I think, what our platform should be is don't put any mandates in the funding as it comes to us. And then we'll figure it out according to our needs, which are far greater than anything we ever get from the legislature.
And I hear you on that one because I know that that's been an issue for years in terms of unfunded mandates. Yeah. So. The language on 2.2. Is that, is that in, in some form giving us some unfunded mandates in terms of if we? If we leave it like it is now? I mean, I'm trying to figure out why, what, what would change? As it relates for the money coming from the state to us. What would actually change?
I, I think my only hope is that we focus on getting more money. Not so much how to distribute it, but that we have a lot of gaps that we're filling with mill levies, with parent raised dollars. With bonds for our capital needs, our HVAC systems. And my hope is just that our school districts and all school districts. Get more consistent, adequate and predictable funding. So it's not so much about dictating where it goes, but it's about just getting more in the pot overall. And letting that be the focus, not so much asking legislators where to put it. Does that? Make sense? I can give it a shot and if it's not better, we can leave it the way, it's not a big deal either way.
Yeah, I'd like to see what you're gonna look, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, we'll see. What else on funding?
I have, sorry, of course, I have three questions. The first one is remember they have the mill levy equalization in this last school finance formula? So this session, there's a good, who knows if they'll increase our taxes without us voting. Are we okay with that or do we want to say anything? Ours would only go up about a mill and a half, so I don't think it's huge, but. It's worth figuring out whether we want to ask them to postpone that till the economy gets better or what do we want to do about that? Or do we want to leave it alone?
Can we ask to be included in the discussion and to have time to talk about it with our community?
Yeah, because I think nobody, it was a, you know, we're in the middle of the pandemic and a week or two long session. I don't think people paid attention to it.
But then, and then there was also the idea of. Taking away part of the mill levy and redistributing it. So it's more equitable with districts that don't, aren't, that aren't able to pass mill levies.
It's, it's not a, I mean, if they raise our mill levy, it's not like we get that money back. It's to help the state. It's not to help us. So I, I just wonder what we want to say about that.
How do people feel about that? It's coming. We're gonna have to tell our lobbyists something.
Kathy, could you explain that? Go in more depth explaining that?
So the legislature put in place in the School Finance Act. Something to allow them to, and I think they were thinking it would be challenged and I haven't heard that there's a challenge yet, Kitty, to it. But anyway, so the way it reads right now is the legislature can raise the mills of any district up to 27. Or, or being fully funded, whichever is lower, right? And so for Boulder, they can raise our mill up to 27 because we're at 25 and a half. It's just to rebalance the state local share. It does not bring in any money to the districts. It's to help the state. Right now.
So how does? Why doesn't it help the districts, I guess?
Well, so that's something we could say is I thought it was an oversight to say any money that's raised locally. That by you raising our mills should stay in education.
So if.
Maybe that's something we could say.
If they do that, does that mean our voters need to vote on going that high or, or they're just doing it?
They're just doing it. They feel like they have the cover under prior court decisions and mistakes that CDE made to be able to do that.
Well, I would be against any more money being raised from our taxpayers going to the state instead of to us. I mean, the state has so woefully underfunded us that. I, I want our money to, you know, come to us and I'm sure other districts do too.
Well, and it's to Tina's point because the chances are. They would raise us to 27 and that money right now doesn't even have to stay in education. But if it stayed in education, it probably wouldn't stay in Boulder. It would probably go to a, an Adams 14 or someplace that's more underfunded. So it's going to be an interesting conversation. I don't think we'll have the answer to it right now, but I just raise it because we should think about it.
Bill, did you want to chime in at all?
So. It, it would get challenged once the mill got increased. Is the suspicion. And it hasn't been challenged yet because nobody's been damaged yet. That's the, the thought behind why, why nothing has been, you know, legal. Challenge hasn't been brought to it. So it would. If the mill got raised, at that point, it would get challenged and I don't know how long it would. Have to be dragged through the court system to, to get. You know, final determination on that, but.
So, so is the rationale? It seems to me like. The state doesn't have enough money to support. School districts like San Luis, for example. So if we provided. That extra couple of meals or whatever. That money would be to support these other school districts? Is that? Or, or, or not? I mean.
What it, what it does. It, it, it increases the local share across all districts that have debruised, right? So that was the, the process behind it is it brings you up to 27. Or whatever you were at the point that you had the, the debruising. Question on your ballot that we did quite a while ago. What that does is it reduces the amount that the state would have to put into the whole system. To keep the same amount of money in the whole system. So more, more money generated locally. Either means more money into K-12 or less money the state has to put in. Which already happens when assessed values go up, right? When, when Boulder County's assessed value goes up, we get less money from the state share. So it's already kind of happens within the system. This would just be a change in the. Actual mill amount as part of that process.
Well, the state should be obligated to support those school districts that. Don't have enough value in their property to be able to raise their own. Mill levies.
So the, the question of, and. Mill levy sharing from an override is a, a related but separate issue. That has come up again, and I think that's part of what you were saying, Kathy, is the, the process of. You know, if a district wanted to go to 30% from 25%, they would have to chip in some amount of that into a pool. That would be shared. A, 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 a sharing formula versus the.
Well. No, more than I was thinking, Bill, is, I mean, if, if it's, if it stays the same and all we're doing is helping the state. So that they can take, pay, pay less money to education and put more money into roads, I wouldn't be okay with that. If they, if they were able to rebalance it and we put in our mill and a half and it stayed in education, we could fight over where it goes. But it should stay in education because it's, in my mind, that's where the money's coming from. I get it's just tax dollars. So they could, they could see it as fungible or not.
And it's not just stay in education. I, I would like for it to stay as net new. Not to offset something else and keep it flat, so.
A supplement versus supplant kind of thing.
Exactly. Like that would be really, I mean, we could write that in the resolution that if. You know, if you, if you contemplate any kind of mill levy sharing, which we probably are a little lukewarm on anyway. It needs to supplement, supplement, not supplant and do good, you know, I mean. Because to Kitty's point, the education budget does seem to be the balancing budget, so. I don't know. Let's see if there's a way we can come up with something that addresses this. How does that sound? And we'll see what happens.
If they'll balance the budget on prisons from now on.
Um, we can write that in too. We have an idea.
Well, then my other two questions, Tina, are, I'm fine. I know people are going to be shocked at this with taking out the language around best. If we put something in the overall fixing of the formula, if we put something in about. Capital construction or something that that's because it's always forgotten.
Yeah.
And we always focus on operations. So when we talk about an overhaul to the system, I think we need to include that. And then to Richard's point, I think we've talked about this, we need to figure out how to pull out special ed. I don't think we can bury that in the, because it's such a huge issue and I don't know what we do about it, but we need to keep it front and center as an issue for funding.
Okay, Bill, do we have a general idea of how short we are in covering our special education costs?
Yes, it's. A lot. Tens of millions.
Because we could, I mean, we could put something in our platform that specifically says. The biggest gap we have is the amount we need to take from our general fund to cover our required special education costs. And that would be a specific area we'd like to see movement on.
Right, so. I guess one question is, is this a, a, a federal stand of legislative platform? Or a state or, or both intended to cover both?
And, and maybe it makes sense to include some federal items because we do have, you know, senators and. Congresspeople and Joe Noguz has been really great at listening and, and he's been great actually on the special education issue. He, from what I've experienced, so I think it's worthwhile, you know, bringing up those ideas.
And, and FYI, that's the number one priority, sped funding for NSBA.
National School Board Association, NSBA.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other changes to the platform as you're reading through it that you felt like we're missing or don't, we don't need anymore?
Can we see it again, please, Randy? Or not?
So as a question of, of interacting with the lobbyists and when legislation comes up. The, the very specific planks that exist in here. Make it pretty easy to react to things that, that don't take a lot of conversation, you know, supporting para or something like that. So if, if things get more generic and high level. Does that mean that the board is looking for interaction on things, which is pretty challenging from a timing standpoint? Of how quickly things need to turn around? Or is it giving more flexibility to staff and the lobbyists to work together? To, to react to legislation as it comes along?
I wouldn't go that general. Kathy?
Go ahead, Tina, then.
Yeah, I, I mean, I wouldn't take out the para bullet, for instance, that's a good one to bring up. And then on the other pages. I, I, I'm just trying to put more focus on the overall increase of net new funding.
What I was going to say, Tina, is I think rather than saying whatever you guys want to bring forward, we're giving you flexibility. It's saying fix the biggest problem and don't waste your time on everything else.
Because what I, what I've been seeing is a lot of focus on reallocation. Not so much on the generation of new revenue. So I don't. I think we have to start with new revenue before we talk about whether the legislature gets to decide, decide how to allocate it, if that makes sense.
It's kind of consistent with what we were talking about the last legislative session before we went into COVID, which is trying to do away with grants. And putting things mostly into the general, well, into per pupil funding.
Do we have a sentence about grants? I don't think we do.
Your point is well taken, Tina, that I think. Do we want to say that?
They get funded with one-time dollars at the state level frequently, which means that they may not continue. So as you become reliant on that program, whatever it is that it might be funding, it then goes away. So it's, it's challenging that, that have those grant programs, whether it's for a district like Boulder. Or small rural, whoever it might be, or folks that don't have the resources to apply for them.
And that's been a concern of mine is that it's places like Boulder that can apply pretty consistently. And there are a lot of districts who are left out because they don't have the capacity.
I, I'd like to get rid of that grant program too, because that grant language, I, I've seen. Education bills that come out of the state legislature that have grant language in there. But they don't even provide the grant dollars for that grant language.
Right.
Gifts, grants and donations, Richard.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, let's try to put something in that addresses that. We'll see what it looks like.
And then I have one other question, Tina. Do we want to say anything about money staying in the public school sector and not going to private schools?
I'm good with that.
I do. Can somebody email that to us? Because I think I have four copies of the Casby final resolutions. But I don't have any copies of ours.
And it was in board docs, if that's helpful.
Okay, I'll get it there then.
Yeah.
Is the private school funding issue different than what's stated in 2.11?
Can you read me 211? Because I don't have it in front of me.
It's about vouchers and tax credits.
It might be fine if I could read the fine print here.
Oppose attempts to divert public dollars away. There we go.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that's fine. I just want to, when we're getting rid of stuff, I don't want to get rid of that one.
Okay, any other questions or comments? I, I'm, I am going to try to wrap this up a little early. So we can all stand up and get a glass of water before we go to the board meeting, if everyone's okay with that. Is everyone good?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I'll see you all in nine minutes.
All right.